So the next item we have before us is G2, and this is a notice of motion from Councilor Skaken. And I'll just let everybody know ahead of time why this is before us. And it is because Councilor Skaken did request some financial information from Ms. Soltes, our acting city manager, back in November regarding some vendors, including a breakdown of costs from 2011 and what projects were and what work was being required. There was also an indication at that time that further questions would be coming, and so I want to give everybody some context as to why this is before us this evening as a notice of motion. So Ms. Soltes did discuss this request with me and sought my direction. And as she indicated, that the information to be obtained would be a considerable amount of work for her staff and a fair bit of time to prepare and asked for my direction. So I provided that, which was this, that the extent of amount of work requested is not work required by City Council, and that the councilor should prepare a notice of motion and bring it to council for support if he feels it's information that the team needs for decision-making. So that direction was certainly conveyed to Councilor Skaken, and he did share with me the motion, the wording that he would bring forward in his notice of motion, although it did have a different list of vendors than what is here before us. And that list has changed, but here we are, and we have a new motion before us tonight. So because he was advised by me to bring this to council as a notice of motion, I want to make sure that these motions do in fact get discussed. So I will second all of the motions this evening so that we make sure that they are on the floor, so that we can have a conversation about it. So Councilor Skaken, with that, I'll just ask you a question regarding them in their entirety. Did you want to discuss them each individually? Or would you like to go through, do one to seven as a block, since it's basically the same motion with different vendors? And then we can do number eight on its own if you wish. What's your preference?
Your worship, if we can do them at a block, I think that would be much easier to handle. And with that, your worship, if any of these do pass and the response comes back from administration, the feedback, I'm open to whatever way administration is going to communicate that back to council, your worship.
Thanks very much. So why don't we move one through seven, since it's the same gist? So moved by Councilor Skaken, seconded by myself for one through seven, and we'll have that conversation. So over to you, and then we'll go to questions or comments from council.
Great, thank you, worship. There is seven recommendations, actually eight, and the eighth is, we'll talk about it in a bit, is just asking administration or asking that council would be given this information if they request it without burdening staff. And you know, in my opinion, your worship, I looked at this list. There's 147, I think, million dollars' worth of expenditures, if you will, in that list. I've looked at a number of them. I've tried to do as much research on some of those to find out what those services were for, the value of those services, your worship. And what I wanted was some clarification on why those services were procured and basically if they went to a tender. And you know, I'll just leave it at that, your worship. And I know when this first came about, financial reporting in the community charter, and I think it was 2004, the provincial government had laid out their criteria for the way that these things can be disclosed. And one of the things that they said is that numbers alone may be misleading. Therefore, it is often good to include comments explaining numbers, your worship. And I think that's all I want. We put out a list, and there was a progress there in 2011, that listed all the vendors. But when that list goes out, I'd like to know what those services are for. And I've been questioned about that as well, your worship. So that's where we are with this.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I have Councilor Stoltz in the queue next, followed by Councilor Wilber on the motions.
Thank you, worship. Your worship, if you allow me a little bit of latitude, I'd just like to ask Councilor Skaken, is this notice of motion about the misappropriation of funds? Does he feel that there's something illegal going on? Just, I want to have clarity around that piece.
Your worship, that's absolutely absurd. That comment is absurd, in my opinion. It's got nothing to do with misappropriation of funds. It's got to do with clarifying what we spent our money on and what those services are for.
So, your worship, I appreciate Councilor Skaken's rather blunt response. The reason why I'm asking the question is because the question I've asked is the very question I'm getting asked by people in the community. It's what I'm reading in posts on blogs, on response to news articles, on social media, saying that, well, we need more transparency because obviously there's something going wrong. And this is my concern with this. So if you don't mind, your worship, again, I'd like to ask council's patience just for a couple of things here, because I'd like to clarify things for the public at large, your worship. So in March of 2010, Governance Review Committee was established. Councilor Skaken asked if he appointed to that by council, as he wasn't serving on any other committees at the time. And council did approve him, myself, and Councilor Murray Kraus being on that committee. That committee, over the following 20 months, did a complete review and overhaul of each of the following items. The first one is Bylaw 8, number 8340. It's a bylaw for the City of Prince George to provide for the appointment of officers and to delegate certain powers, duties, and responsibilities to such officers and other employees. This bylaw, specifically Section 6 through 10, provides approvals for council to delegate its authority to specific staff positions within City Hall. This was co-drafted by Councilor Kraus, myself, and Councilor Skaken, and was voted in favor of at the committee level and at council, where it was approved unanimously. The next one was Bylaw number 8365. This is a bylaw in the City of Prince George to provide for the delegation of certain purchasing powers, duties, and responsibilities to designated officers and other employees. Now, I'll again stress that this was done over the course of 20 months of work with the committee. This bylaw, specifically Section 5, sets out purchasing procedures and purchasing limits for each delegated position. This ensures that there is open and transparent purchases done at every level, and it states everything from purchases under 5,000, under 25,000, 100,000, all the way up to a million and over, and explains how those purchases are done. So again, this was clearly, sorry, this item was discussed at committee level and endorsed at committee level. It was discussed at council as well, and unanimously endorsed at council. This item was co-drafted by myself, Councilor Kraus, and Councilor Skaken. Next one we have is Bylaw number 8388. This is a bylaw for the City of Prince George to establish the general procedures to be followed by council and council committees in conducting their business. So specifically this one, what it does is it gives certain powers to council that were new. Again, we completely overhauled each one of these bylaws. They were rewritten from the ground up to make sure that we were ensuring open and transparent government and that there was information available to all councils and access to that information was provided equally. So Mr. Babich, what authority does this bylaw give to members of council regarding committees?
Mr. Babich.
Your worship, the Procedures bylaw provides that the mayor has the authority to appoint members to the standing committees. All the other members of council are ex-official members of those committees. And the same provisions apply to the select committees, where council as a whole appoints members to the select committees. And those members of council that are not appointed to the committee are also ex-official members of those committees, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Babich. Further to that, your worship, there is also a Committees, Commissions, and Board Procedures Manual that was developed, that was developed by Councilor Kraus, myself, and Councilor Skaken, which was approved by council unanimously. Lastly, your worship, we have the Standing Committee of Finance and Audit Terms of Reference. Specifically, it states that, number two, the Finance and Audit Committee exists to provide a forum for informal discussion of issues related to the city's finance and corporate function and to review the results of the city's financial auditing process. Specifically, under mandate F, to review and make recommendations to council on other matters referred to the committee by council, requested by committee, or submitted to the committee by administration. This again was co-drafted by Councilor Skaken, myself, and Councilor Kraus. This is voted on in favor unanimously at committee level, at committee of the whole, and again at council in October of 2011, where it was again approved unanimously. Now, the reason why I stress that is we had the opportunity for 20 months to review every aspect of how the finances of the City of Prince George are handled. We had the opportunity to have input on how those invoices were to be brought forward, which invoices would be approved by council and which invoices would be approved by staff at the different levels. This says that we trust our staff, that they are competent in what they do, and that they are professional. Council saw that as being reasonable and unanimously endorsed each one of those steps. Council as a body thought that, at the time, over a 20-month discussion period, that there was no need for us to have minutia control over invoices, over purchasing, or over how our staff went through their day-to-day procedures. Now, it is important to understand that there are controls in place. And to put things into perspective, just a couple of questions, your worship, for Ms. Soltes. How many invoices a year for purchases does the City of Prince George process?
Ms. Soltes.
Your worship, we process 13,000 to 15,000 invoices a year.
And, your worship, how much money are we actually spending on those invoices? How much money are we spending with suppliers?
Your worship, between operational and capital expenses, in 2011, we spent $154 million, your worship.
So, and, your worship, do we make this information available to the public, to Ms. Soltes? And if so, at what level, and how do we report that out?
Ms. Soltes.
Your worship, we have a financial information statement for individual suppliers. And we report by suppliers for the ones that we've spent more than $25,000 in one year, your worship. That is part of a report that goes to the ministry and is placed on our website, your worship.
And further, your worship, I'm assuming that it's widely known, but for the sake of completeness here, I'm going to ask the questions anyway. Your worship, do we have an auditor that audits the City of Prince George? And if so, how do we find that auditor? How do we come up with that auditor?
Ms. Soltes.
Yes, your worship, we're required to have an auditor. Currently, we have the very large and reputable firm of Deloitte and Touche. We have a five-year contract with Deloitte, your worship. Every five years, we go to market, and requests for proposals are submitted to us by auditing firms for that work, your worship.
And, your worship, how long has Deloitte and Touche been our auditor for?
It slips my mind a bit, your worship, but I would think for 10 years, if not longer, your worship.
So, and, through the, your worship, through the course of their review of revenue and budgets, as well as other items such as payroll, expenditures, and such as purchases and capital assets, are there any concerns raised that have led to changes to how the city operates?
Ms. Soltes.
Your worship, in recent years, our financial statements, the audit by Deloitte has resulted in these statements being unqualified, which is what we would like to see. In addition to that, in the last couple of audits, Deloitte hasn't found the need to provide us with a management letter. So in their view, our accounting processes are what they should be, your worship.
So from my experience, your worship, an unqualified management letter at the beginning of your financial statements is a pretty big deal. It doesn't happen easily. It means that we're following procedures correctly and that we're actually checking on things. So here's the next piece, your worship, and that is that as part of Finance and Audit's mandate is to audit the financial statements and audit the items that go on in the City of Prince George. Our auditors come before Finance and ask the committee if there's any issues they have concerns over. If there's any areas that are specifically identifiable that we should be letting them know so they can actually pursue those areas. And for the last three years, there's been, or four years, the mine time on Finance and Audit, there's never been an item raised by the committee. And that's a total of seven different people, six different people, over the last four years. Further, your worship, as the Chair of Finance and Audit, the auditors approach the Chair of Finance and Audit, and have for almost a decade now, and ask the Chair of Finance and Audit specifically, are there any areas of concern that you have? Is there anywhere you would like us to check and dig deeper on? And at no time have they found any problems with those recommendations. So what I'm at a concern with, and frankly, at a loss with, is that we have, as Councilor Skaken's well aware, the ability to sit on any committee as ex officio and bring concerns to light there. At no time in the last four years that I've been on council, and Councilor Skaken's been here, granted, significantly longer than I have, has he attended a Finance and Audit Committee and raised any concerns or asked for any information around invoices or how the accounts are paid. And I have to admit that I struggle with this, because I have to admit that he had no problem getting hold of me or contacting me when he was having challenges with the whole piece around his censure, when he had questions about that. Yet he hasn't bothered to bring this forward. And I'm seriously challenged, your worship, because what he's brought forward here, because this has been brought forward in the manner that it has, has seriously impugned the credibility of our staff and our organization. If there was a reason explaining why, as opposed to just some generic piece that's in the notice of motion, maybe it would make more sense. But what it has done for the last two and a half weeks since the notice of motion has been published is have people walking up to me in the grocery store asking me what the hell is going on there. I thought you guys were running a tight ship. And I find it a little embarrassing. Thank you, worship.
Thank you very much. Councilor Wilber, I have you next in the queue, followed by Councilor Skaken.
Your worship, I too have problems with this motion. This motion is presented under the guise of a search for transparency. Don't be fooled. This has nothing to do with our administration and the city processes not being transparent. Let's look at the facts. Our city possesses one of the elite levels of process. It has been awarded the Gold Level of Canada's Awards of Excellence. This includes process management. We have been judged to be among the very best in local government. That doesn't square with the question that's left open-ended by the way this motion has been brought forward. The processes available to council, some of which Councilor Stoltz mentioned, which allow us to educate ourselves, obtain information, in my mind, in logical ascending order, are research it ourselves. I think Councilor Skaken indicated he did some research, but the purpose for the motion, he didn't share. Chat with fellow councilors or staff. Ask for brown bag topical sessions. Sit on or attend ex officio at any of the city's standing and select committees and task forces. Attend regularly-held Finance and Audit Committee meetings and make inquiries. And the last is bring a motion to council. In my mind, this is a last resort step and is usually reserved for emerging issues. What all of these processes share, have in common, is that the ask would be accompanied with an explanation as to why the ask. Clearly, there is a cost implication in any dig. That means disclosing what the worry is is important. As I understand it, this inquiry was presented to our senior staff member as, by email, in a bold request. In other words, without reasons. I have heard all councilors, including Councilor Skaken, in open council sessions, express their worry about the impact and cost of asking staff to take on more work. We know that new work, new work we have assigned. We know staff time is a valuable resource. That's why council spends a great deal of time, through Finance and Audit and otherwise, prioritizing our work plan and then passing by this council our work plan. This notice motion is basically saying to staff, I want you to include this in the work plan, because it's not there now. It's saying to council, you don't need to know the reason. Let's be clear. Councilor Skaken has not spoken with me about the topic of this motion, about the reason for it, nor about the case to add it to the work plan, nor what priority to give it, nor what currently on the work plan should be dropped or given less priority. The listed invoices do not appear to fall into the emerging issue category. I've looked at the motion, and I challenge anyone to find a scintilla of reason for the request. It would be fair, then, if one who was having a dialogue with Councilor Skaken, to ask him, is there really no purpose? Is there a hidden purpose? Or has he not turned his mind to it at all? If we were to okay requests without explanation, it would be a precedent that could trigger an avalanche of requests and have a significant financial consequence. It would be irresponsible. As a councilor, I'm expected to use reason and my time to look into matters. In my view, bold asks are unreasonable and wasteful. Let's take a minute and visualize what chaos would occur if every citizen had the right to interrupt staff's assigned work by making unexplained asks. Is it any more reasonable, then, to say, well, that wouldn't work because it would create chaos and gridlock, and it would destroy the city? Is it any more reasonable to determine because the person is a councilor, he or she has the right to ask bold questions? I repeat, as a councilor, I'm expected to use reason and my time to look into matters. In my view, unexplained asks are unreasonable and wasteful. So this fails on two bases. One is the purpose is not disclosed. And secondly, as a councilor, part of my job is to oversee the work plan and make sure that it is not disrupted unreasonably. What is being proposed by this motion is that exactly. And number eight would make it a gridlock, in my mind. The misguided coloring of this ask as proof of our city failing to be transparent is tantamount to throwing the administration under the bus. I believe we have excellent process, stellar staff, and they are totally blameless in this. I will not support this motion.
Thank you for that. Councilor Skaken, I have you next, followed by Councilor Everett Kohler and Kraus.
Thank you, your worship. Perhaps Councilor Wilber didn't read the report. The reason I am asking for this information is to be able to respond to questions I have received from individuals in the community regarding how and why we spend our tax dollars with a number of businesses. Didn't think that was too complicated, your worship, to Councilor Wilber. And I also feel that as an elected official, I should be able to access this type of information upon request to help fulfill my oversight obligations that I have to the residents of Prince George. And I'm also going to touch on Councilor Stoltz's reports that he went into. And there's no doubt that I was involved with that whole process, your worship. And as I've said before, and I'll say it again, when I started going through this list in mid to late 2011, and as a core review process was going on, I started looking at that and thinking, okay, did KNPG go through this entire list? Is there other opportunities for us to save money? There's a number of consultants on here. I had questions about some of those and why the money was spent. But if you want to go into years' worth of history, you know, go ahead, Councilor Stoltz. The information I wanted, I think, is quite simple. And the reason I'm asking for it is in my report, your worship.
Thank you for that clarification. I have Councilor Everett, followed by Kohler and Kraus.
Thank you, worship. I'm pleased how we started out on this. There was communication about whether or not, how we could get information out. And I think it's important that we get information out. What I find more troublesome is when we go through this Mickey Mouse process of notice of motion, where you set up a stage for two or three weeks ahead of time, and we leave out in the community the misgivings of what is going on. When we have the clear answer from Councilor Skaken to Councilor Stoltz's question, is there any misgivings about our staff? I'm happy with the response that came out of that, because I think that is important for the community to know and for our staff to know, that we do not categorically believe that there is any hanky-panky going on in the process. And I think that's important. And other things that we have done, we've communicated with the community to say on a regular basis, here's what we've done. We've asked for this council to approve what we're under for lawsuits on a quarterly basis. That could be looked at for here. Ms. Stoltz says that we have anything, we have a number of things along the way for individual staff's approval rating. And I think those are good things that the previous council had put in place. And we have a limit of $25,000 if we spend, that the ministry gets notified, and it goes on our website. Lo and behold, there it is. We have that number that we're looking for. So if that was put together on a quarterly basis and submitted to our Finance and Audit Committee, then the community would know, and so would every councilor know what we're spending on. I believe that there's substantial amount of invoices that go through our facility, and we need to prioritize those so those substantive numbers are identified and clearly put out there. But I want to emphasize, more importantly, is that we do not find anything wrongdoing here. It's a motion that's been put forward by a process that we created that says we want to be more transparent, and here is how we're going to do it. And going to the step where it's out there quarterly, I don't think would hurt us.
Thanks for that. Councilor Kohler, followed by Councilor Kraus.
Thank you, worship. A lot has to do with perception, and that's certainly a dangerous thing. Well, in the case where one of us wanted to follow up on a transaction because it may raise concern for whatever reason, then there should be a possibility or process to obtain that information. And I'll come to that. I'm talking about, for instance, one transaction or one question, not a number of transactions or a variety of. In my case, if I would want to know something like this, I probably, not knowing the process, as Councilor Stoltz just explained it, I probably would email the mayor with a copy to our manager and ask for that information. Everything is budgeted. And in my opinion, we have no reason not to trust our administration. That has been already alluded to. There are checks and balances in place. And on top of this, already had mentioned, we have professional audit looking at everything. I like to refer, but not read, to an editorial written by one of our local newspapers. And the question is, why should we councilors dig around if there's nothing suspicious? It would tremendously undermine, in my opinion, the trust in our administration, directors, and management. I do not believe that groundless fishing activities would do anything. I am more interested in setting policies and make decisions that benefit many, as many as possible, in our community. By doing just that, the financial framework has been set beforehand. And we don't have to check up, in my opinion, on administration unless, as mentioned, I have reason to or become suspicious. If we passed the motion before us, and I understand where it's coming from, I understand, Councilor Skaken, there are questions in the community wherever, it may open a floodgate and undermine completely the trust in our administration. I do not think that is wise, and I'm not supporting this motion. However, we should have a process that's clearly defined. If there is a question from any of us, I mean, just one question, and not just hundreds, or how many, there has to be a process that we get this information. And I have some ideas. And I have some ideas, but something has already been mentioned. I would like to leave it there. Thank you, your worship.
Thanks for that. Counselor Kraus, followed by Counselor Hall and Frizell.
Well, thank you, your worship. Well, just on Counselor Kohler's last comment, I have never had a problem in getting information that I have asked for. And again, if you, if you come in in a reasonable fashion, it's never been denied. I think that denied would be a strong word because again, I don't think it's ever been, it's never been even suggested that, that the information would be denied to members of council. I too have concerns with this request. I'm, I won't be supporting the motion and not because I don't believe in transparency. I believe we get all the information that we need to do our jobs as members of council. This is my fifth term on, on city council and I've never felt that information has been withheld from me or from other members of council. It's been acknowledged that we, that the committee was formed and looked at all of those processes. That was a big piece of work and I thought that was the goal was to, to mitigate any concerns about spending authority and transparency. With, I guess it's request number eight. My concern is if this is supported, it will give carte blanche support for even more requests of information that we don't need to do our job as members of council. We already have all the oversight mechanisms in place that are needed. We have professional staff that are honest and competent. Treating professional staff as dishonest or incompetent is disrespectful and can lead to a toxic work environment. Our books are audited annually. We have the finance and audit committee and we have councils whole. We have a budget that is scrutinized and approved by council. And that is administration's spending plan for the year. And that budget is compared to expenditures when the audit takes place. So it's not just we pass the, the budget and then the auditors come in and scrutinize expenditures. The two are compared. So it is council's plan that the administration is acting on. And it's been acknowledged by, by Ms. Stoltz that, you know, our recent audits have required no management letters. Our auditors have been very pleased with, with the work that's being done and how it's being done. I guess to give, I guess to give the impression that city staff can only do their job with a member of council, looking over the shoulders, of course, nonsense. They are competent, professional people who've been trained to do this work. And I think to call, what, what this does is create a cloud over, over everyone. And I think it creates a cloud over administration. It creates, creates a cloud over us as council and creates a cloud over the whole corporation. And that's concerning because I'm proud of doing this work. And I've been proud of doing it for a very long time and I want that to continue. But again, if, if we're going to be called into question and then somehow it seems that something untoward is happening is just not right. I guess it's, I've already said it. I think that one of the, Counselor Skaken indicated that, I think his words were, if staff could provide this information without providing, without burdening staff, I don't see that untendered requests for information is going to not burden the staff. They already have full jobs. We, we've already stretching them to the limit and we will continue to do so. But to add these extra burdens will only, only create more burdens for them. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that. Counselor Hall, followed by Counselor Frizell.
Thank you, your worship. I've got a couple of questions, some comments respective of the fact that some of us have only been around this table for a year. I think what we're talking about this evening probably goes back further than that. Two questions. One to Counselor Skaken around why these seven? I didn't, perhaps I didn't understand the rationale clearly enough. But the other piece of this is around the disclosure of the principles of the companies. And I think we see that in number three, number seven. I'm trying to get a handle on why, why that is part of it.
Counselor Skaken?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, your worship, to Counselor Hall. I, as I stated earlier, I looked through a number of companies on the list, tried to find out which ones I could find out information on. And I ended up coming down to these different companies because those are the ones that I still had questions for. I found the, the process to get to where I was wasn't easy, but those are the companies that I had questions about. What were the services for? For example, L and M Engineering, it would be engineering work. And there was a contract awarded, I think in 2010 for the boundary road connector for 1.5 million. This amount was 600 and something thousand. McElany, McElany Engineering was also on the list for, I think, 180,000. I didn't know what the services were for that one. And there was other, other agencies and consultants that I didn't put on the list that I could have. So I mean, that's how I come down to those, those ones there. And what was the second question, your worship, to Counselor Hall?
It was just how the seven came about, which you've answered and of course.
There was a, yeah, thank you. There was a lot bigger list to start with, but I kind of whittled it down.
Okay. I'm not quite sure where to start. I guess I'm going to start off by saying that my one year on the job, I've had no issues with garnering information. And God only knows, I spent a tremendous amount of time badgering staff to try to learn what the city is all about. It's a professional staff. It's a staff that I believe stands out amongst staffs throughout the province. I've had the great opportunity of working with staffs like this in my previous life. And you depend on the job they do. When you take a look at what council is elected to do, you take a look at what each of, what each one of us and how we perform our job, each one of us does it a little bit differently. You need, I think, to create an understanding amongst council and staff about what the roles are. And as I say, I've had no issue with, with receiving information. When this notice of motion came out, and it wouldn't have mattered who brought the notice of motion out, it created a cloud of suspicion. It wouldn't have mattered if I brought it forward, Counselor Frizell, whoever would have brought it forward, that's what it would have created because that's human nature. Why can't I get this information around these expenditures? And for me personally, I find that troubling because I have had to respond to that in the community. And quite honestly, that's not fair. It's not a fair thing for me to have to do. What we're dealing with is a request. What we're now dealing with is having to deal with the request as a group of nine and also deal with that cloud of suspicion. And maybe that's the nature of the job. Maybe that's what this is all about, I guess. That at some point in time, the group of nine, people question what we're doing, question our decisions. But it's very, very difficult to work under that. You know, the financial commitments that we make, the expenditures that we make, the transactions that we conduct, the decisions we make at this table are scrutinized by everyone. They're scrutinized by the public, they're scrutinized by the press, they're scrutinized by our, our staff because they're having to implement things, scrutinized by our auditors. There's also, and I'll probably get this name wrong, your worship, but the municipal auditor general newly appointed. So it, it's a difficult position to be in. I'm not going to support the recommendations one through seven. I'm satisfied that this council and our staff are meeting the financial commitments that we are required to meet. I'm satisfied that I can go to staff and request the information, have a great discussion and get that information. I think our staff do a bang up job. As I said earlier, very, very professional. I have no question about that. But again, we still have to deal with this cloud that's hanging over us. I understand where Counselor Skaken is coming from. He has some questions he wants answered. This becomes an onerous task and I think becomes a message sent in the community, as I said earlier, that I need to respond to with respect to what are you doing there? What's up with this? So, your worship, the other piece I guess I wanted to talk about just for a moment is around our budget process. And I, I think Counselor Kraus may have brought it up or Counselor Stoltz. We have a, we have a budget process. We beat these numbers up, we beat expenditures up. We're going to do that in February and it is going to be a tough, tough time. But that's another stopgap measure that this council has and administration has and you as the public have to make sure that we're making good decisions. You may not agree with them, but the decisions are made in this room for everybody to take a look at. So, your worship, with that, as I said, I won't be supporting this. I'm comfortable with these expenditures. And certainly if I have any further questions, I know where to get the answers. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Frizell.
Thank you, Mayor Crane. Not really clear where people are standing right now. So I just want to say it's a bit of a shame that this has become a corruption issue because it overshadows a far more important issue. We're, we're all confident about staff and the processes and how we're audited. I get a lot of work done on my cars. Esslinger provides photos for me. And Napa Auto Pro, they actually brought the muffler out and showed it to me, a layman who doesn't get mufflers. They don't do that because they want to prove their honesty. They do that to involve me in the car that I'm driving. And from that unexpectedly, I've learned things about my driving habits. And I've learned things about how many tiles I should not have packed into the van because of how, what kind of stress it put onto the, onto the car. It was, it wasn't about the honesty of the mechanics at all. This isn't the first query we've had about spending and it's not going to be the last. This, this goes on. This is what democracy is about and people tend to ask the questions that they're interested in. Like our official community plan, our government system has to live and evolve and respond to what the public wants. B Cers in particular have a pretty funny way of deciding what is and isn't their business. They, our public puts forth 10 times the F O I requests of any other province. We put as many F O I requests together as any three other provinces combined. And our current provincial government in D C, they've been the leading edge in putting information out there. Our current federal government in Ottawa has signed on to open government principles and they're pushing them forward. We see that in the cities of Edmonton, Winnipeg, Montreal and across the country, open government's being adopted. And two weeks ago, just a little side note, as I left, I met a wonderful older person who'd walked four kilometers to watch the debate. It was just a notice of motion, but she'd walked four kilometers because of her interested in, interest in it. And I drove her home and she talked passionately about how important the issue was to her. So she'd chosen what, what was or wasn't important. And it wasn't about a potential about corruption. It's a real shame that that discussion has overshadowed it. About a couple of weeks ago, we lost Aaron Schwartz. He was one of the pioneers in transparency, government and on the internet. And the quote I like from him is that the public pays for this data and it's theirs. His quote from, from the open government book, which was made free and available as a tribute to him was publishing, I suspect few people would put publishing government documents on the web high in their priorities, but it's a fairly cheap project. You just throw piles of stuff into scanners. So tonight, we've heard questions about the man and about why he asked, but those questions aren't the relevant ones. It shouldn't be about the man or the reason he asked. It should be about why does it cost so much money for us to put that information out there? Let's find a way to get past the cost of it. And as I think Counselor Kohler's on the same side, if, if we can get past these costs that Ms. Stoltz has talked about, it's not difficult. None of us are hiding anything. There's no reason not to do it. The question should be about how do we cut down the cost of getting the information out there? Because it's the public's data and they should have access to it. Thank you.
Thanks for that. And I'll just wrap up and then I'll call the question on this item and then we'll go to number eight next. And then we'll do our public hearings following that. So I also will not be supporting any of these and for the reasons that everyone around the table has expressed. And just a couple of comments. Obviously, the notice of motion process that we have requires the council member to submit it to an agenda and then it must wait until the following meeting. So it does create this vacuum in this period of time where it's not addressed by this council. And the space gets filled up by other things. And as I reminded everyone at the beginning, I instructed staff to direct Counselor Skaken to bring this as a notice of motion. And it's not because we don't know the information. It's because of the processes it takes to get the information. And is this what we want our staff working on? Or do we want them actually processing the invoices and paying the bills? For me, I want staff working on the work plan that we've provided for them and this is not it. I need to say a couple of things. People have talked to me about political grandstanding. It is not political grandstanding to bring a notice of motion to council. I think somebody that has an interest, who wants to work on initiatives for the betterment in the community, that's a good thing. This, this is the process that we have in our procedure so that we can have this conversation. I'm fine with having this conversation here. Certainly, I regret that our staff have had to wait two weeks for us to have the conversation. And so, you know, the issue is that there's a fostering and a feeding of some conspiracy climate out there in this community and in other communities. And there's this cloud of suspicion that hangs there and we've heard about that tonight. And so here's some of the words I found online about this very issue and what people out in the community think is going on in this building. Skullduggery. Palm greasing by our staff, that we have something to hide. That there are nefarious dealings, that we have two sets of books. There's been impropriety, a covert offer, operation, shenanigans, lining pockets, and that there will be screeching of the banshees being exposed in City Hall. Those things are disgusting and ridiculous. And the fact that there are people in this community who believe that about this building and the professional staff who work here is appalling. That, that cloud continues to be fed in a variety of ways and it's unacceptable. We do have a process to get questions answered. And several people around this table have said, I get my questions answered. And I think that Counselor Skaken will tell you, most of the time, he also gets his questions answered. He has lots of questions. Probably in my time here, it's into the hundreds. There are many, many questions. And it takes up staff time to be responsive to that. And they're, they do their best. And one of the processes that we implemented when this new council sat a year ago is that we would share that information with each other. So if a counselor has a question and needs to understand something that has not yet been presented to this table or would be new information that council doesn't know about, we will all get that answer together so that we're all informed. And I would challenge any of you around the table to suggest that you're not getting a flood of emails from me about all kinds of things that are being asked. That information is being shared and our questions are getting answered. So why aren't these questions getting answered? And the issue is not that we don't have the information. It's that we don't have it in a process that you just type a few words and something pops up and poof, there's a perfect answer in a format that fits the question that was asked. One of the, one of the questions is who are the principals of this company? We don't keep that information. The city doesn't require a list of the principals of a company that it writes a check to. It's just the way it is. So things have been asked of us that we don't have the information for. And staff have looked at this and they've obviously had a conversation that led them to ask me, help us out, give us some direction. What are we going to do with this? This is a lot of work. And I'm sure there's people out there who won't believe that it's a lot of work, but it is, or the questions would have been answered easily. They're not able to be answered easily. So for me, I feel like we're going down another rabbit hole. We've been down a rabbit hole with the gaming center. Cost us tens of thousands of dollars to do an audit of how that process was conducted. And the result was a very satisfactory response that council accepted. So this is, you know, this is challenging. It was challenging for the last mayor and the mayor before that. I think that, you know, the real answer to the question when somebody asks you, why did X Y Z company get a check for that amount of money? Is that we have staff that delegated that, staff that approved that. We have policies and procedures. We have an open and competitive tendering process and bid process. Delegated authority with signing limits. People are accountable for their jobs in this building. And I'm very confident in our staff and the work that they're doing. We need to trust them. And they need to feel like they can trust us. And we need to trust each other around this table. And this council, as you've heard tonight, is not supportive of putting this burden on our staff. And we need to trust that that's the appropriate decision. And with that, I'm going to call the question on one through seven. All in favor? One through seven, that administration be directed to disclose to the public the reasons the city has authorized the expenditures of, seven amounts to seven agencies. That's what's on the table. Number three also has principles.
Motion to divide out three and seven. If I can amend my motion to my division.
Okay, we can do that. So the process then for that, Mr. Babbage? Okay, we can do that. So, the process then for that. Mr. Babbage?
Your worship, the question can be severed by the request of any member of council. It doesn't need to be seconded.
That's fine.
So, if Counselor Frisell has requested to sever, I think it was question three and seven, then it would be in order for you to call the question on the remaining items and then call question three and seven separately. Your worship?
Thanks. Just wanted that clarity so everybody knew what the question is now on the floor, which is one through seven, minus three, and minus seven. And with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Counselor Frisell is in favor. Counselor Skaken is in favor. Counselor Everett is in favor of disclosing the information. That's the question before us. And opposed? Counselor Kraus, Kohler, Stoltz, myself, Hall, and Wilbur are opposed. And then on question three, and these have already been moved and seconded, so they're on the floor, just so everybody's clear at home. So, question three was with respect to exposing the expenditure amount, the vendor, as well as who the principals of the company are. So, I'll call the question on number three. All in favor? Counselor Skaken is in favor of that and opposed. Counselor Frisell, Everett, Wilbur, Hall, myself, Stoltz, Kohler, and Kraus are opposed. And then on question seven, all in favor? Counselor Skaken's in favor, opposed. Everybody else is opposed. You got that, Mr. Babbage? Thanks very much. So, the last motion on this item is that administration provide information to individual counselors, if requested by them, to clarify why a city has spent funds from businesses listed in the annual Pritch George Financial Information Statement of Suppliers. And Counselor Skaken, you want to move that?
I move eight, your worship.
Thank you, and I will second that so we can get that on the floor. And can you speak to this item?
Yeah, thank you, worship. And I just wanted to start by thanking the counselors that took the time to inquire of me, my resolutions and where it's coming from, because I thought that was important, your worship. This one is straightforward, and what I'm not looking for is to open the so-called floodgates. If I have a simple question about a purchase or a supplier, all I wanted was a simple answer, your worship. Perhaps some people think that following an FOI would be even easier, but that's more cumbersome, in my opinion, your worship. So, number eight is straightforward. I'd like it if I got a question from the member of public, or I had a question myself with regards to the supplier list only, not dealing with any proprietary information, that I could get that answered and get back to that person, your worship. And just to build on that, a question to administration, your worship. If a member of the public calls a service center with a question maybe similar to this, or another financial question, what is the process, your worship, to administration to deal with that person making the call?
Ms. Soltis?
Your worship, the appropriate level of staff, probably an accounting supervisor, would talk to that person and try to determine what the request was. And a broad request can result in a lot of difficulty. I'll give you an idea of what we're looking at if the request is too broad. If we just get a very general request on a vendor, it involves us having to have our staff look at, go through the accounting process. They can't just pick up something on an electronic system. They've got to make note of an invoice. They've got to like make note of document numbers and pull individual invoices from the third-floor vault. And then, if it goes further than that, and the person is looking for an explanation, we've got to try and categorize the expense. The information that is needed might not all be in one place. Even if it is, it probably takes about 10 minutes per invoice. If we're only looking at one invoice, it's fine. It's when we're looking at 10 invoices or 20 invoices that it gets cumbersome. And if reasons are wanted for the authorization of the expenses, then the staff have to go further, and they have to correspond with staff in other divisions to find that information, your worship. So, that's when it becomes difficult. So, if it's a simple request that can be clarified, then the answer will be provided, your worship. But if it's numerous requests given at the same time, that involves combing through manual records, your worship, then we do have to find out, is this where our resources should be spent? And we need advice on that. Staff would need to seek my advice. And if it were requests such as the one that we've received from Counselor Skaken, your worship, then I in turn seek the mayor's request on, is this where we should be spending our time, your worship?
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Anything for other counselors, Skaken, on this?
No, it self-explanatory. I've said as much as I wanted with this, and not only am I asking this question as a counsel, your worship, and people might ask of me, but I ask it as a taxpayer as well. You know, I'm interested in where we're spending our money. Thank you.
So, thanks. I've got a few in the queue. Just a question with respect to this, which is about the list of individual suppliers. So, it's a list of suppliers who annually we spend $25,000 a year or more. And can you just speak to where that list is, how it's available to the public, and in terms of our annual report and all the financial statements that we provide?
Yes, your worship. Your worship, we're required to put together, there's a financial information regulation under the Financial Information Act. That includes a schedule of debts, a schedule of debts covered by sinking funds or reserves, a schedule of guarantee and indemnity agreements, any severance agreements, remuneration and expenses paid to employees that make more than $75,000 per year, remuneration and expenses paid to mayor and council, the payments per provision of goods or services for vendors that we spend more than $25,000 with, and payments for grants. These schedules are prepared by professional staff, your worship. There are various levels of review. They are audited. They're signed off, your worship, by the mayor and by me. They are available for public review prior to the annual report being presented to council before June 30th of each year, and they're sent to the ministry, your worship. Currently, they're placed on the website. The information for 2011 is now on the website. The information for 2012 will be there probably by about mid-June, your worship. In previous years, we haven't presented the information to council during a meeting. We have presented the annual report, which includes the financial statements, but not these actual financial information reports. Your worship, this year, it's our intention to present these information reports at the council meeting where the review of the annual report will take place. And that will be, I think, about June 24th of this year, your worship. The idea being that the public will be able to review these reports prior to that meeting. Should they have particular questions, they can submit them, and the answers could be provided in a timely fashion then, your worship.
Thanks for that. All right. Counselor Hall, I have you next, followed by Everett and Stoltz.
Your worship, I want to, I made a note here. I want to, at some point, and it's probably after number eight is dealt with, but, you know, is there a positive outcome to this conversation? I don't know, but I wanted to follow up. And I don't mean to put Counselor Everett on the spot, but he had commented on a couple of things early on about what we may do, could do, talked about finance and audits, so perhaps after number eight. So, specific to number eight in the process, when we had our orientation a year ago, and we talked about processes, about communication, how we were going to deal with various things, the requests, it's my understanding that we have that in place. And we have a question from administration. We would submit that through you, along with the other counselors, so they know where an individual council member is headed with the request, and that would work its way through your office, through the staff, and then back to the entire council. That's my understanding.
Sometimes it goes directly to staff and comes back through me, but, yeah.
So, that, for me, that's a process that has worked well. So, when it comes to number eight, I see that we have something like that already in place. But I'm looking for comments, I guess, from my colleagues as to whether I'm off in left field.
Okay. Well, the queue is lit up, so we'll go around. Counselor Everett, I have you next, followed by Counselor Stoltz.
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate Ms. Stoltz's response as to how answers would be given, but I'm really challenged now, given what we went through with the previous seven, that if the demeanor of everyone stays the same, and we say no to number eight, then A, B, C, your counselor that goes and asks the particular question, the answer will be, no, that didn't pass, so now you're not entitled to the information. And I don't think that's the atmosphere that we want to create. What I would hope that the mover in the secondary would look at number eight and drop it off the page, and let us move forward and see if we can put something else in place. Because if this fails, then I think staff is within their rights to say to us, nope, you don't get that information. And if we want to move past today and do something better, then number eight doesn't do it first. Thank you, worship.
Thanks for that. Counselor Stoltz, followed by Counselor Wilbur and Kohler.
So, your worship, I'd like to go back to the bylaws that Counselor Skaken helped draft. They clearly articulate that there is an avenue out there other than a notice of motion. That seems to have been missed. If there's information requested, all members of councils are ex officios of Finance and Audit, and Finance and Audit has the mandate to be able to do the work that's being requested here. Nobody around the table has shown up at Finance and Audit and asked that question. Finance and Audit just circulated its work plan to all members of council, drawing attention to some of the budget, or sorry, the tax-setting steps that'll be coming up here in advance. So, again, everybody's well aware of that. I would like to address a couple of things, your worship, and that is, there was a discussion about just dumping the data out there. So, your worship, if we just dumped all of our invoices out and the exact amount we paid for everything, that's 15,000 items, your worship, to Ms. Soltis, when we pay an invoice, do we attach the reason for the invoice when we pay it?
No, your worship, we don't.
So, I assume that there's some internal coding that happens with regards to that? Is that correct, your worship?
Yes, your worship, that's correct. There might also be some freedom of information and protection and privacy implications, your worship.
So, your worship, in dumping our data, all we're going to do is just generate even more questions because we're currently already dumping our data. We provide everything as Counselor Frisell has asked for. We take all 14,000 items, and we publish every one of them for every supplier that is 25,000 or more. So, that information's already out there. So, let's be precise here. So, if we were to change our process, your worship, to Ms. Soltis, so that every invoice had the reason for it attached to it, would that take an extra minute per item?
Ms. Soltis?
I'd be guessing, your worship, but that probably wouldn't be unreasonable.
So, we're talking about a new staff member being hired and working eight to nine months just for that? I don't know. I think this goes back in better uses of staff money. So, that's my personal perspective on this, your worship, and I won't be supporting number eight.
Thanks for that. Counselor Wilbur, followed by Counselor Kohler and Kraus.
Yeah, your worship, with respect to number eight, I don't believe our process is broken. I didn't hear anybody say that it was in this entire dialogue. It's clear to me that there's a real cost and impact by proposing what item eight suggests. And to me, it seems to not just, just, but actually push towards a micromanagement. I don't believe that that's why we were elected. We were elected to use common sense, to scrutinize things carefully in the policy and within the confines of what comes before us in council. To suggest that we can embroil ourselves in second-guessing and pulling things out willy-nilly, that, to me, doesn't make any sense in the context of an audited process and all the other safeguards that are in place. On the transparency issue, it's clear to me that Counselor Frisell has been on this track for a while. And I've read some of the material on Government 2.0, and there's a lot of merit in that. But I don't see getting there by bringing a motion in this sense. I see maybe a brown bag process where we dwell into what the technologies are available, what the limits are, and what the cost would be to implement. I see that as something that we do another day. And as to item eight, I will not be supporting.
Thanks for that. Counselor Kohler, followed by Kraus and Hall.
Thank you. I would like to follow up on Counselor Everett. I'd have a question, if I can, to Ms. Soltis, your worship. Is it possible, and I didn't really follow up, is it possible to print all invoices, 25,000 and above, with a name, not necessarily what it was for? Does the program allow, for instance, to say, print out all invoices above 25,000 with a name? That must be easy or not?
Ms. Soltis, the 25,000 list, it could be one vendor with multiple invoices that add up to 25,000 or more, or one vendor with a single invoice for over 25. Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship.
And with respect to, I think, what Counselor Kohler's asking, if I may, is, is it something you can print tomorrow, or is it something you compile once a year? Is that your question, Counselor Kohler?
Something like this. If I program, for instance, print all invoices above 25,000, I realize there may be several invoices going to one vendor. That'd be a little bit more complicated. But just all invoices above 25,000 shouldn't take, well, sorry, shouldn't take too long. I don't know. Is that possible?
I expect it's possible, your worship. I can't really give you...
You don't know how long it takes?
No.
Takes five minutes programming, and it spits it all out? Normally not. Because where I want to go is, despite the fact that, obviously, which I don't know, there is a process in place where one can go to the finance and committee and find out, I thought there might be an easier process where it's all listed and we have access to it. Because I also have some trouble, a little bit trouble at least, with point eight. And as Counselor Everett mentioned, administration can say no, because according to this vote, we don't have to let you know what's happening. And there must be other ways. And the other way is certainly communication between us, and talk to each other, and going to the meetings that are open to everybody, instead of trying to find a complicated way, and if that doesn't work, then I come up with something and force it. So, sorry, that obviously cannot be answered right away, so that's what you're saying, right?
No, your worship, but I wonder, actually, in gathering this information, I wanted to get from my staff an idea of the resources that would be used to answer these inquiries. So, my accounting staff gave me one example out of the list of vendors that was asked for. And I'll run you through that to give you an idea of what's involved. Bullet seven in the motion is number 188 Holdings. And that was picked because the dollar figure of the vendor was the middle of the road of the vendors mentioned. Behind the dollar amount for that particular vendor, there was 43 invoices for 2012. So, that means going and looking for 43 invoices. And when that staff member looked at the amount of time per invoice it would take, he calculated that just for that one vendor, there could be about seven hours or more spent. And that's without actually looking at the reason behind all of these various invoices. That takes even more time. And that's for things that are done through invoices. It's not for things that are done through the purchasing card system. Those are in different locations. That takes even more time. So, just to give you a sense of the resources that would be used, just for one vendor with a middle-of-the-range dollar expenditure, your worship?
Yeah. I guess, if I may, your worship, thank you. I didn't look at that detail, but when I asked my wife, for instance, can you print out all the invoices above 5,000? That's done like that, because the program allows to do that. And I'm just looking at the invoices, not how they're kind of coming together. I'm looking at an opportunity, like Mr. Everett, Counselor Everett said, to possibly drop item eight if we find a solution. And that would certainly satisfy me. But obviously, it's difficult to find a solution. I'll leave it there for the time being.
Thanks for that. Counselor Kraus, followed by Counselor Hall and Skaken.
Well, thank you, worship. And I guess, of course, all the discussion has raised a whole bunch of other questions. And certainly, I think that just dropping number eight at this point would not be a great, good thing to do. I think that we should acknowledge that there might be other ways of increasing transparency, if we can do that in an affordable way that makes sense, that doesn't just create more questions. And I think, but again, I think that's a lengthy discussion that can take place. And I don't think it can take, we don't have all the information to have that conversation take place tonight. I don't think the system is broken. It's already been acknowledged that many of us have no problem in getting our questions answered, because I think we come forward with questions at a rate that the staff can handle. I guess my concern is, as I just alluded to, that just dumping information, I think, would create more questions than would create answers. And I think it's really important to acknowledge, if we're going to micromanage our staff's time, is I certainly, when I... is I certainly, when I, I run an agency, I don't always just go with the cheapest vendor. I go with the people who have the capacity to do it well. They have a tracker, they're doing a really good job, and on time, and on budget, and all those kinds of things. So again, it's much more complicated than just saying, you know, and again, those are the questions that we raise by the public and quite appropriately, but just dumping the information on, out there wouldn't solve that problem. I think we just create more questions. I think if anything, you look at all of this, is that there is a silver lining in this, in this discussion this evening because we've had extensive discussion about what the city has in place, the processes that are in place, and how we strive for transparency, good governance, and respect for our employees. So I think, you know, we've had an opportunity to discuss that. We've never had, really had that opportunity before. So again, I appreciate that opportunity, but again, I think there's different ways at getting to the same end. But I think it requires, you know, some, a lot of effort and people coming to the table to talk about what's available out there and how the cities are doing it. And could it, is it something we could replicate? So I think it really is a much larger discussion. I won't be supporting number eight at this time, but I'm sure, open to having discussions now, as this proceeds, on how we increase information to the public in a way that's manageable. So thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor Hall, followed by Skeken and Frizzell.
Well, thanks for letting me back in, Your Worship, and I guess, as I said earlier, I was looking for a positive outcome. Now I'm looking for an outcome. I'm not sure if my colleagues will see this as positive or not, but I would like to see, as Counselor Everett has indicated, I'd like to see the mover of eight drop that off the table. I think we're, we have the opportunity, as a group of nine, to get together with the staff, have one of our brown bag lunches to talk about the issues that Counselor Frizzell has brought forward, the issues that Counselor Everett has talked about, the ones I've talked about, and everybody around the table. These are not new tonight, this transparency piece, what Counselor Frizzell has talked about, Kohler. These have sort of been in and out of conversations over the last 12 months, freely communicate amongst us about what we think we should be laying out there and how that process is all about. And also tied to it, the discussion around counselors receiving information. And I guess, from my perspective, Your Worship, I see that as a positive outcome. So I'll leave it there. If eight stays on the table, then I'll deal with it. But in saying that, I still hope that if eight stays on the table and we have the vote, no matter which way it goes, I would still like to see us work proactively in trying to pull together and have this conversation. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor Skeken.
Well, Your Worship, before I pull eight, I'll get your feedback on that. And I just want to go back to Counselor Stoltz's Finance and Audit report. When this, Counselor Frizzell and I brought this to council a year or so ago, the report from F and A was to do what Quinell was doing, to report the financial details as Quinell broke it down. And we're talking small items on a monthly council agenda with 64 to 90 hours a year. Now, is that costly perhaps to some? Others, it might not be. But we're not talking about 15,000 invoices, hiring a new staff member for minimum nine months a year, Your Worship. So I'll just leave it at that. We have made progress with this. I would like to see us make some more. And I'll look and wait and see what you have to say about dropping off number eight, Your Worship, and trying to come up with a process where counselors can get the information if we request it. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I have two more in the queue on this motion, so perhaps I'll just give them an opportunity to speak. Counselor Frizzell, followed by Everett, and then I'll give you my comments on eight.
Thank you, Mayor Green, and I think in listening around the table, there's some great direction that's been given from Counselor Kraus and Counselor Hall in particular. I think we can take these ideas and move forward in brown bag in particular and get some of these ideas on the table and look at some of the successes in the past. Because it wasn't more than a decade ago that, when a Realtor wanted information from Prince George, they might have to face stiff fees. We had a great big database of maps that were available. But under that model, it was very expensive to get that data out. Now with PG Map online, we've had a huge success. People can go in and pull that, pull whatever information they want from PG Map. It's been a great success of open government for us. It's getting the data out there so that we don't have to pay someone to go in and do the requests for information. Now, we can take those successes, those demonstrated successes we have in the past, and look for ways to do that here. I'd be concerned if the motion isn't removed or if it fails on this point for the reasons that Counselor Everett outlined. So I'm looking to see what's gonna happen next.
Great, thanks for that. Nothing from you, Counselor Everett? You're gonna wait. Well, when I'm finished, I'm gonna drop the motion or call the question, so now's your chance.
Is that what we're gonna do?
That's what we're gonna do, one or the other. So, thank you for that, and some great conversation around the table, which is exactly why we've brought this, to this venue, so that we can have this conversation. I think Kathleen Saltis has provided some good information on why it is the way it is and what it would take to change it is significant. We had this conversation last spring. We talked about creating a monthly accounts payable listing, and the reasons for that were not supported by council. So to revisit that is a revisiting of a motion that failed. So there's that issue. With respect to open data and Government 2.0, and Counselor Frizzell, I'm sure will nod, I did encourage him last spring to prepare some information around this. It's a passion of his. Help the rest of council understand why it would be of benefit as opposed to what I see and many others have said tonight is potentially a huge financial cost for the city. So I encouraged him again last week to do that. Bring us some information. Let's pull a staff administrative meeting together with some PowerPoint, some demonstrated information around that. Because I don't think anybody here is not interested in open and transparent government, or we wouldn't be having this conversation in this manner like we are. This is how it works. So having said all of that, for me, if eight stays on the floor, I would not be supporting it because what I did hear from Ms. Saltis was that this would be brought to our annual report meeting where all of this information is reported to council. So eight is specifically with respect to this financial information sheet of individual suppliers. And you've already indicated at the beginning of this conversation that it hasn't come to an open meeting of council before. It's been public, it's been on the website, it's in our information, but it hasn't been presented in the format with the annual report. And starting this year, that is something you'll be doing. That's correct, Ms. Saltis?
That's correct, Your Worship.
And I think I also heard you say that, at that time, when that's published, we would all see that, and if there are items or red flags or things in there we wanted to know about, we could have that conversation. You would be able to, I guess, have a list of the items we might want more information on. And then you'd be able to report back to us what it would take to get that information, similar to what you've already shared with us tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct, Worship.
Thanks for that. So having said that, I'm happy to drop eight. If you're happy to drop eight.
Yep, through your leadership, Your Worship, if that's, in fact, what we're gonna do, then it kind of resolves number eight. Thank you.
Thanks for that. So how do we withdraw eight? Just by stating so, and that's done?
By unanimous consent of council, Your Worship. So if anybody objects, then it won't be withdrawn.
Do you object, Counselor Everett? So the question before us to withdraw number eight is a vote of council, correct?
Your Worship, if you could just ask if anybody objects and they would raise their hand, Your Worship.
Does anyone object to withdraw of number eight? So seeing none, then that's dropped. Is that correct? Thank you. I don't think we've done one like that before, so I wasn't quite sure procedurally what to do there. So that's where it stands, and I think it's fair to say that we'll have some future conversations around this. And F and A, as has already been well articulated, is a venue for counselors to come and have a conversation around the finance side of things, and I would encourage everybody to do that. Counselor Paul, I see your thinking. You wanna?
As a result, not to prolong this, because we've been at it now an hour and a half and there are folks waiting, but as a result of my comments around us brown bagging it and having a conversation around that, I don't want to put a motion for it. I'd like to do this as simply as possible, but I would like us to pursue that. I would take that on. I know that you've already challenged Counselor.
Encouraged.
Encouraged. Encouraged Counselor Frizzell to bring forward that piece. But we need to have this discussion, and it can't prolong. We need to get this out of the way because, as I said earlier, I want to get away with that loud. I'm tired of it.
Yep. We all heard that loud and clear. I don't think a motion on the fly would be helpful at this point. I think we're all, we're all interested in getting to the center.
Thank you. I just needed, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we are going to move on.
Thank you, Mayor Green. Not really clear where people are standing right now. So I just want to say it's a bit of a shame that this has become a corruption issue because it overshadows a far more important issue. We're all confident about the staff and the processes and how we're audited. I get a lot of work done on my cars. Esslinger provides photos for me, and NAPA Auto Pro, they actually brought the muffler out and showed it to me, a layman who doesn't get mufflers. They don't do that because they want to prove their honesty. They do that to involve me in the car that I'm driving. And from that, unexpectedly, I've learned things about my driving habits. And I've learned things about how many tiles I should not have packed into the van because of how, what kind of stress it put onto the, onto the car. It was, it wasn't about the honesty of the mechanics at all. This isn't the first query we've had about spending, and it's not gonna be the last. This goes on. This is what democracy is about, and people tend to ask the questions that they're interested in. Like our official community plan, our government system has to live and evolve and respond to what the public wants. B.C.'ers in particular have a pretty funny way of deciding what is and isn't their business. Our public puts forth 10 times the FOI requests of any other province. We put as many FOI requests together as any three other provinces combined. And our current provincial government in D.C., they've been the leading edge in putting information out there. Our current federal government in Ottawa has signed on to open government principles, and they're pushing them forward. We see that in the cities of Edmonton, Winnipeg, Montreal, and across the country, open government's being adopted. And two weeks ago, just a little side note, as I left, I met a wonderful older person who'd walked four kilometers to watch the debate. It was just a notice of motion, but she'd walked four kilometers because of her interest in it. As I drove her home, she talked passionately about how important the issue was to her. So she'd chosen what was or wasn't important, and it wasn't about a potential about corruption. It's a real shame that that discussion has overshadowed it. About a couple of weeks ago, we lost Aaron Schwartz. He was one of the pioneers in transparency, government, and on the internet. And the quote I like from him is that "The public pays for this data, and it's theirs." His quote from, from the Open Government book, which was made free and available as a tribute to him, was, "Publishing, I suspect few people would put publishing government documents on the web high in their priorities, but it's a fairly cheap project. You just throw piles of stuff into scanners." So tonight, we've heard questions about the man and about why he asked, but those questions aren't the relevant ones. It shouldn't be about the man or the reason he asked. It should be about, why does it cost so much money for us to put that information out there? Let's find a way to get past the cost of it, and as I think Counselor Kohler's on the same side. If we can get past these costs that Ms. Saltis has talked about, it's not difficult. None of us are hiding anything. There's no reason not to do it. The question should be about, how do we cut down the cost of getting the information out there? Because it's the public's data, and they should have access to it. Thank you.
Thanks for that. And I'll just wrap up, and then I'll call the question on this item, and then we'll go to number eight next. And then we'll do our public hearings following that. So I also will not be supporting any of these, and for the reasons that everyone around the table has expressed. And just a couple of comments. Obviously, the notice of motion process that we have requires the council member to submit it to an agenda, and then it must wait until the following meeting. So it does create this vacuum in this period of time where it's not addressed by this council. And the space gets filled up by other things. And as I reminded everyone at the beginning, I instructed staff to direct Counselor Skeken to bring this as a notice of motion. And it's not because we don't know the information. It's because of the processes it takes to get the information. And is this what we want our staff working on? Or do we want them actually processing the invoices and paying the bills? For me, I want staff working on the work plan that we've provided for them, and this is not it. I need to say a couple of things. People have talked to me about political grandstanding. It is not political grandstanding to bring a notice of motion to council. I think somebody that has an interest, who wants to work on initiatives for the betterment in the community, that's a good thing. This is the process that we have in our procedures so that we can have this conversation. I'm fine with having this conversation here. Certainly, I regret that our staff have had to wait two weeks for us to have the conversation. And so, you know, the issue is that there's a fostering and a feeding of some conspiracy climate out there in this community and in other communities. And there's this cloud of suspicion that hangs there, and we've heard about that tonight. And so here's some of the words I found online about this very issue and what people out in the community think is going on in this building. Skullduggery. Palm greasing by our staff, that we have something to hide. That there are nefarious dealings, that we have two sets of books. There's been impropriety, a covert operation, shenanigans, lining pockets, and that there will be screeching of the banshees being exposed in City Hall. Those things are disgusting and ridiculous. And the fact that there are people in this community who believe that about this building and the professional staff who work here is appalling. That, that cloud continues to be fed in a variety of ways, and it's unacceptable. We do have a process to get questions answered, and several people around this table have said, "I get my questions answered." And I think that Counselor Skeken will tell you, most of the time, he also gets his questions answered. He has lots of questions. Probably, in my time here, it's into the hundreds. There are many, many questions. And it takes up staff time to be responsive to that, and they do their best. And one of the processes that we implemented when this new council sat a year ago is that we would share that information with each other. So if a counselor has a question and needs to understand something that has not yet been presented to this table, or would be new information that council doesn't know about, we will all get that answer together so that we're all informed. And I would challenge any of you around the table to suggest that you're not getting a flood of emails from me about all kinds of things that are being asked. That information is being shared, and our questions are getting answered. So why aren't these questions getting answered? And the issue is not that we don't have the information. It's that we don't have it in a process that you just type a few words and something pops up and poof, there's a perfect answer in a format that fits the question that was asked. One of the, one of the questions is, who are the principals of this company? We don't keep that information. The city doesn't require a list of the principals of a company that it writes a check to. It's just the way it is. So things have been asked of us that we don't have the information for, and staff have looked at this, and they've obviously had a conversation that led them to ask me, "Help us out. Give us some direction. What are we gonna do with this? This is a lot of work." And I'm sure there's people out there who won't believe that it's a lot of work, but it is, or the questions would have been answered easily. They're not able to be answered easily. So for me, I feel like we're going down another rabbit hole. We've been down a rabbit hole with the gaming center. Cost us tens of thousands of dollars to do an audit of how that process was conducted, and the result was a very satisfactory response that council accepted. So this is, you know, this is challenging. It was challenging for the last mayor and the mayor before that. I think that, you know, the real answer to the question when somebody asks you, "Why did X, Y, Z company get a check for that amount of money", is that we have staff that delegated that, staff that approved that. We have policies and procedures. We have an open and competitive tendering process and bid process. Delegated authority with signing limits. People are accountable for their jobs in this building. And I'm very confident in our staff and the work that they're doing. We need to trust them, and they need to feel like they can trust us. And we need to trust each other around this table. And this council, as you've heard tonight, is not supportive of putting this burden on our staff. And we need to trust that that's the appropriate decision. And with that, I'm gonna call the question on one through seven. All in favor? One through seven, that administration be directed to disclose to the public the reasons the city has authorized the expenditures of, seven amounts to seven agencies. That's what's on the table. Number three also has principles.
Motion to divide out three and seven, if I can amend my motion to my division.
Okay, we can do that. So the process then for that. Mr. Babbage?
Hi, Your Worship.
Your worship, the question can be severed by the request of any member of council. It doesn't need to be seconded.
That's fine.
So, if Counselor Frizell has requested to sever, I think it was question three and seven, then it would be in order for you to call the question on the remaining items and then call question three and seven separately. Your worship?
Thanks. Just wanted that clarity so everybody knew what the question is now on the floor, which is one through seven, minus three, and minus seven. And with that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Counselor Frizell is in favor. Counselor Skeken is in favor. Counselor Everett is in favor of disclosing the information. That's the question before us. And opposed? Counselor Kraus, Kohler, Stoltz, myself, Hall, and Wilbur are opposed. And then on question three, and these have already been moved and seconded, so they're on the floor, just so everybody's clear at home. So, question three was with respect to exposing the expenditure amount to the vendor, as well as who the principals of the company are. So, I'll call the question on number three. All in favor? Counselor Skeken is in favor of that and opposed. Counselor Frizell, Everett, Wilbur, Hall, myself, Stoltz, Kohler, and Kraus are opposed. And then on question seven, all in favor? Counselor Skeken's in favor, opposed. Everybody else is opposed. You got that, Mr. Babbage? Thanks very much. So, the last motion on this item is that administration provide information to individual counselors, if requested by them, to clarify why a city has spent funds from businesses listed in the annual storage financial information statement of suppliers. Counselor Skeken, you want to move that?
I move eight, your worship.
Thank you, and I will second that so we can get that on the floor. And can you speak to this item?
Yeah, thank you, worship. And I just wanted to start by thanking the councils that took the time to inquire of me, my resolutions and where it's coming from, because I thought that was important, your worship. This one is straightforward, and what I'm not looking for is to open the so-called floodgates. If I have a simple question about a purchase or a supplier, all I wanted was a simple answer, your worship. Perhaps some people think that following an FOI would be even easier, but that's more cumbersome, in my opinion, your worship. So, number eight is straightforward. I'd like it if I got a question from the member of public, or I had a question myself with regards to the supplier list only, not dealing with any proprietary information, that I could get that answered and get back to that person, your worship. And just to build on that, a question to administration, your worship. If a member of the public calls a service center with a question maybe similar to this or another financial question, what is the process, your worship, to administration to deal with that person making the call?
Ms. Soltis?
Your worship, the appropriate level of staff, probably an accounting supervisor, would talk to that person and try to determine what the request was. And a broad request can result in a lot of difficulty. I'll give you an idea of what we're looking at if the request is too broad. If we just get a very general request on a vendor, it involves us having to have our staff look at, go through the accounting process. They can't just pick up something on an electronic system. They've got to make note of an invoice, they've got to make note of document numbers, and pull individual invoices from the third-floor vault. And then, if it goes further than that, and the person is looking for an explanation, we've got to try and categorize the expense. The information that is needed might not all be in one place. Even if it is, it probably takes about 10 minutes per invoice. If we're only looking at one invoice, it's fine. It's when we're looking at 10 invoices or 20 invoices that it gets cumbersome. And if reasons are wanted for the authorization of the expenses, then the staff have to go further, and they have to correspond with staff in other divisions to find that information, your worship. So, that's when it becomes difficult. So, if it's a simple request that can be clarified, then the answer will be provided, your worship. But if it's numerous requests given at the same time, that involves combing through manual records, your worship, then we do have to find out, is this where our resources should be spent? And we need advice on that. Staff would need to seek my advice, and if it were requests such as the one that we've received from Counselor Skeken, your worship, then I in turn seek the mayor's request on, is this where we should be spending our time, your worship?
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Anything further, Counselor Skeken?
No, I mean, self-explanatory. I've said as much as I wanted with this, and not only am I asking this question as a counsel, your worship, and people might ask of me, but I ask it as a taxpayer as well. You know, I'm interested in where we're spending our money. Thank you.
So, thanks. I've got a few in the queue. Just a question with respect to this, which is about the list of individual suppliers. So, it's a list of suppliers who annually we spend $25,000 a year or more. And can you just speak to where that list is, how it's available to the public, and in terms of our annual report and all the financial statements that we provide?
Yes, your worship. Your worship, we're required to put together, there's a financial information regulation under the Financial Information Act. That includes a schedule of debts, a schedule of debts covered by sinking funds or reserves, a schedule of guarantee and indemnity agreements, any severance agreements, remuneration and expenses paid to employees that make more than $75,000 per year, remuneration and expenses paid to mayor and council, the payments for provision of goods or services for vendors that we spend more than $25,000 with, and payments for grants. These schedules are prepared by professional staff, your worship. There are various levels of review. They are audited. They're signed off, your worship, by the mayor and by me. They are available for public review prior to the annual report being presented to council before June 30th of each year, and they're sent to the ministry, your worship. Currently, they're placed on the website. The information for 2011 is now on the website. The information for 2012 will be there probably by about mid-June, your worship. In previous years, we haven't presented the information to council during a meeting. We have presented the annual report, which includes the financial statements, but not these actual financial information reports. Your worship, this year, it's our intention to present these information reports at the council meeting where the review of the annual report will take place, and that will be, I think, about June 24th of this year, your worship. The idea being that the public will be able to review these reports prior to that meeting. Should they have particular questions, they can submit them, and the answers could be provided in a timely fashion then, your worship.
Thanks for that. All right. Counselor Hall, I have you next, followed by Everett and Stoltz.
Your worship, I want to, I made a note here, I want to, at some point, and it's probably after number eight is dealt with, but, you know, is there a positive outcome to this conversation? I don't know, but I wanted to follow up. And I don't mean to put Counselor Everett on the spot, but he had commented on a couple of things early on about what we may do, could do, talk about finance and audits, so perhaps after number eight. So, specific to number eight and the process, when we had our orientation a year ago, and we talked about processes, about communication, how we were going to deal with various things or requests, it's my understanding that we have that in place, and we have a question from administration. We would submit that through you, along with the other counselors, so they know where an individual council member is headed with their request, and that would work its way through your office, through the staff, and then back to the entire council. That's my understanding.
Sometimes it goes directly to staff and comes back through me, but, yep.
So, that, for me, that's a process that has worked well. So, when it comes to number eight, I see that we have something like that already in place. But I'm looking for comments, I guess, from my colleagues as to whether I'm off in left field.
Okay, well, the queue is lit up, so we'll go around. Counselor Everett, I have you next, followed by Counselor Stoltz.
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate Ms. Stoltz's response as to how answers would be given, but I'm really challenged now, given what we went through with the previous seven, that if the demeanor of everyone stays the same, and we say no to number eight, then A, B, C, your counselor that goes and asks a particular question, the answer will be, "No, that didn't pass, so now you're not entitled to the information." And I don't think that's the atmosphere that we want to create. What I would hope that the mover in the secondary would look at number eight and drop it off the page, and let us move forward and see if we can put something else in place. Because if this fails, then I think staff is within their rights to say to us, "Nope, you don't get that information." And if we want to move past today and do something better, then number eight doesn't do it first. Thank you, worship.
Thanks for that. Counselor Stoltz, followed by Counselor Wilbur and Kohler.
So, your worship, I'd like to go back to the bylaws that Counselor Skeken helped draft. They clearly articulate that there is an avenue out there other than a notice of motion. That seems to have been missed. If there's information requested, all members of councils are ex officios of finance and audit, and finance and audit has the mandate to be able to do the work that's being requested here. Nobody around the table has shown up at finance and audit and asked that question. Finance and audit just circulated its work plan to all members of council, drawing attention to some of the budget, or sorry, the tax-setting steps that'll be coming up here in advance. So, again, everybody's well aware of that. I would like to address a couple of things, your worship, and that is, there was a discussion about just dumping the data out there. So, your worship, if we just dumped all of our invoices out and the exact amount we paid for everything, that's 15,000 items, your worship to Ms. Soltis, when we pay an invoice, do we attach the reason for the invoice when we pay it?
No, your worship, we don't.
So, I assume that there's some internal coding that happens with regards to that? Is that correct, your worship?
Yes, your worship, that's correct. There might also be some freedom of information and protection and privacy implications, your worship.
So, your worship, in dumping our data, all we're going to do is just generate even more questions, because we're currently already dumping our data. We provide everything as Counselor Frizell has asked for. We take all 14,000 items, and we publish every one of them for every supplier that is $25,000 or more. So, that information's already out there. So, let's be precise here. So, if we were to change our process, your worship to Ms. Soltis, so that every invoice had the reason for it attached to it, would that take an extra minute per item?
Ms. Soltis?
I'd be guessing, your worship, but that probably wouldn't be unreasonable.
So, we're talking about a new staff member being hired and working eight to nine months just for that? I don't know. I think this goes back in better uses of staff money. So, that's my personal perspective on this, your worship, and I won't be supporting number eight.
Thanks for that. Counselor Wilbur, followed by Counselor Kohler and Kraus.
Your worship, with respect to number eight, I don't believe our process is broken. I didn't hear anybody say that it was in this entire dialogue. It's clear to me that there's a real cost and impact by proposing what item eight suggests. And to me, it seems to not just adjust, but actually push towards a micromanagement. I don't believe that that's why we were elected. We were elected to use common sense, to scrutinize things carefully in the policy and within the confines of what comes before us in council. To suggest that we can embroil ourselves in second-guessing and pulling things out willy-nilly, that, to me, doesn't make any sense in the context of an audited process and all the other safeguards that are in place. On the transparency issue, it's clear to me that Counselor Frizell has been on this track for a while, and I've read some of the material on Government 2.0, and there's a lot of merit in that. But I don't see getting there by bringing a motion in this sense. I see maybe a brown-bag process where we dwell into what the technologies are available, what the limits are, and what the cost would be to implement. I see that as something that we do another day. And as to item eight, I will not be supporting.
Thanks for that. Counselor Kohler, followed by Kraus and Hall.
Thank you. I would like to follow up on Counselor Everett, and have a question, if I can, to Ms. Soltis, your worship. Is it possible, and I didn't really follow up, is it possible to print all invoices $25,000 and above with a name, not necessarily what it was for? Is it, does the program allow, for instance, to say, "Print out all invoices above $25,000 with a name"? That must be easy or not?
Ms. Soltis, the $25,000 list, it could be one vendor with multiple invoices that add up to $25,000 or more, or one vendor with a single invoice for over 25. Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship.
And with respect to, I think, what Counselor Kohler's asking, if I may, is, is it something you can print tomorrow, or is it something you compile once a year? Is that your question, Counselor Kohler?
Something like this. If I program, for instance, print all invoices above $25,000, I realize there may be several invoices going to one vendor. That'd be a little bit more complicated. But just all invoices above $25,000 shouldn't take, well, sorry, shouldn't take too long. I don't know. Is that possible?
I expect it's possible, your worship. I can't really give you...
You don't know how long it takes? Takes five minutes programming, and it spits it all out? Normally not. Because where I want to go is, despite the fact that, obviously, which I don't know, there is a process in place where one can go to the finance and committee and find out, I thought there might be an easier process where it's all listed and we have access to it. Because I also have some trouble, a little bit trouble at least, with point eight, and as Counselor Everett mentioned, administration can say, "No," because according to this vote, we don't have to let you know what's happening. And there must be other ways. And the other way is certainly communication between us and talk to each other and go into the meetings that are open to everybody, instead of trying to find a complicated way, and if that doesn't work, then I come up with something and force it. So, sorry, that obviously cannot be answered right away, so that's what you're saying, right? Not so easily.
No, your worship, but I wonder, actually, in gathering this information, I wanted to get from my staff an idea of the resources that would be used to answer these inquiries. So, my accounting staff gave me one example out of the list of vendors that was asked for, and I'll run you through that to give you an idea of what's involved. Bullet seven in the motion is number 188 Holdings. And that was picked because the dollar figure of the vendor was the middle of the road of the vendors mentioned. Behind the dollar amount for that particular vendor, there was 43 invoices for 2012. So, that means going and looking for 43 invoices. And when that staff member looked at the amount of time per invoice it would take, he calculated that just for that one vendor, there could be about seven hours or more spent. And that's without actually looking at the reason behind all of these various invoices. That takes even more time. And that's for things that are done through invoices. It's not for things that are done through the purchasing card system. Those are in different locations. That takes even more time. So, just to give you a sense of the resources that would be used, just for one vendor with a middle-of-the-range dollar expenditure, your worship?
Yeah, I guess, if I may, your worship, thank you. I didn't look at that detail, but when I asked my wife, for instance, "Can you print out all the invoices above $5,000 that's done like that?", because the program allows to do that. And I'm just looking at the invoices, not how they're kind of coming together. I'm looking at an opportunity, like Mr. Everett, Counselor Everett said, to possibly drop item eight if we find a solution, and that would certainly satisfy me. But obviously, it's difficult to find a solution. I'll leave it there for the time being.
Thanks for that. Counselor Kraus, followed by Counselor Hall and Skeken.
Well, thank you, worship. And I guess, of course, all the discussion has raised a whole bunch of other questions. And certainly, I think that just dropping number eight at this point would not be a great, good thing to do. I think that we should acknowledge that there might be other ways of increasing transparency, if we can do that in an affordable way that makes sense, that doesn't just create more questions. And I think, but again, I think that's a lengthy discussion that can take place, and I don't think it can take, we don't have all the information to have that conversation take place tonight. I don't think the system is broken. It's already been acknowledged that many of us have no problem in getting our questions answered, because I think we come forward with questions at a rate that the staff can handle. I guess my concern is, as I just alluded to, that just dumping information, I think, would create more questions than would create answers. And I think it's really important to acknowledge, if we're going to micromanage our staff's time, is I certainly, when I run an agency, I don't always just... time, is I certainly, when I run an agency, I don't always just go with the cheapest vendor. I go with the people who have the capacity to do it well, they have a track record, they're doing a really good job, and on time and on budget and all those kinds of things. So again, it's much more complicated than just saying, you know, and again, that, those are the questions that we raise by the public, and quite appropriately, but just dumping the information on, out there wouldn't solve that problem. I think we just create more questions. I think if anything, you look at all of this, is that there is a silver lining in this, in this discussion this evening, because we've had extensive discussion about what the city has in place, the processes that are in place, and how we strive for transparency, good governance, and respect for our employees. So I think, you know, we've had an opportunity to discuss that, we've never had, really had that opportunity before. So again, I appreciate that opportunity, but again, I think there's different ways at getting to the same end, but I think it requires, you know, some, a lot of effort and people coming to the table to talk about what's available out there and how the cities are doing it, and could, is it something we could replicate? So I think it really is a much larger discussion. I won't be supporting number eight at this time, but I'm sure open to having discussions now, as this proceeds, on how we, how we increase information to the public in a way that's manageable. So thank you.
Thanks for that. Counsel Hall, followed by Skaken and Frisell.
Well, thanks for letting me back in, your worship. And I guess, as I said earlier, I was looking for a positive outcome. Now I'm looking for an outcome. I'm not sure if my colleagues will see this as positive or not, but I would like to see, as Counsel Everett has indicated, I'd like to see the mover of eight drop that off the table. I think we're, we have the opportunity, as a group of nine, to get together with the staff, have one of our brown bag lunches to talk about the issues that Counsel Frisell has brought forward, the issues that Counsel Everett has talked about, the ones I've talked about, and everybody around the table. These are not new tonight, this transparency piece, what Counsel Frisell has talked about, Kohler, these have sort of been in and out of conversations over the last 12 months, freely communicate amongst us about what we think we should be laying out there and how that process is all about. And also tied to it, the discussion around counselors receiving information. And I guess from my perspective, your worship, I see that as a positive outcome. So I'll leave it there. If eight stays on the table, then I'll deal with it. But in saying that, I still hope that if eight stays on the table and we, we have the vote, no matter which way it goes, I would still like to see us work proactively in trying to pull together and have this conversation. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Counsel Skaken?
Well, your worship, before I pull eight, I'll get your feedback on that. And I just want to go back to Counsel Stoltz's finance and audit report. When this, Counsel Frisell and I brought this to council a year or so ago, the report from FNA was to do what Cornell was doing, to report the financial details as Cornell broke it down, and we're talking small items on a monthly council agenda with 64 to 90 hours a year. Now, is that costly, perhaps, to some? Others, it might not be, but we're not talking about 15,000 invoices, hiring a new staff member for a minimum nine months a year, your worship. So I'll just leave it at that. We have made progress with this. I would like to see us make some more, and I'll look and wait and see what you have to say about dropping off number eight, your worship, and trying to come up with a process where counselors can get the information if we request it. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I have two more in the queue on this motion, so perhaps I'll just give them an opportunity to speak. Counsel Frisell, followed by Everett, and then I'll give you my comments on eight.
Thank you, Mayor Green, and I think in listening around the table, there's some great direction that's been given from Counsel Kraus and Counsel Hall in particular. I think we can take these ideas and move forward, and brown bag in particular, and get some of these ideas on the table, and look at some of the successes in the past, because it wasn't more than a decade ago that when a Realtor wanted information from Prince George, they might have to face stiff fees. We had a great big database of maps that were available, but under that model, it was very expensive to get that data out. Now with PG Map online, we've had a huge success. People can go in and pull that, pull whatever information they want from PG Map. It's been a great success of open government for us. It's getting the data out there so that we don't have to pay someone to go in and do the requests for information. Now, we can take those successes, those demonstrated successes we have in the past, and look for ways to do that here. I'd be concerned if the motion isn't removed, or if it fails on this point for the reasons that Counsel Everett outlined. So I'm looking to see what's going to happen next.
Great, thanks for that. Nothing from you, Counsel Everett?
Oh, wait.
You're going to wait? Well, when I'm finished, I'm going to drop the motion or call the question, so now's your chance.
Is that what we're going to do?
That's what we're going to do, one or the, one or the other.
Go ahead, Bart.
So, thank you for that, and some great conversation around the table, which is exactly why we've brought this, to this venue, so that we can have this conversation. I think Kathleen Soltis has provided some good information on why it is the way it is and what it would take to change it is significant. We had this conversation last spring. We talked about creating a monthly accounts payable listing, and the reasons for that were not supported by council. So to revisit that is a revisiting of a motion that failed. So there's that issue. With respect to open data and Government 2.0 and Counsel Frisell, I'm sure will nod, I did encourage him last spring to prepare some information around this, it's a passion of his, help the rest of council understand why it would be of benefit as opposed to what I see and many others have said tonight is potentially a huge financial cost for the city. So I encouraged him again last week to do that. Bring us some information. Let's pull a staff administrative meeting together with some PowerPoint, some demonstrated information around that. Because I don't think anybody here is not interested in open and transparent government, or we wouldn't be having this conversation in this manner like we are. This is how it works. So having said all of that, for me, if eight stays on the floor, I would not be supporting it, because what I did hear from Ms. Soltis was that this would be brought to our annual report meeting where all of this information is reported to council. So eight is specifically with respect to this financial information sheet of individual suppliers. And you've already indicated at the beginning of this conversation that it hasn't come to an open meeting of council before. It's been public, it's been on the website, it's in our information, but it hasn't been presented in the format with the annual report, and starting this year, that is something you'll be doing. That's correct, Ms. Soltis?
That's correct, worship.
And I think I also heard you say that at that time, when that's published, we would all see that, and if there are items or red flags or things in there we wanted to know about, we could have that conversation. You would be able to, I guess, have a list of the items we might want more information on, and then you'd be able to report back to us what it would take to get that information, similar to what you've already shared with us tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct, worship.
Thanks for that. So having said that, I'm happy to drop eight, if you're happy to drop eight.
Yep, through your leadership, your worship. If that's in fact what we're going to do, then it kind of resolves number eight. Thank you.
Thanks for that. So how do we withdraw eight? Just by stating so, and that's done?
By unanimous consent of council, your worship.
Okay.
So if anybody objects, then it won't be withdrawn.
Do you object, Counsel Everett? So the question before us to withdraw number eight is a vote of a motion, a vote of council, correct?
Your worship, if you could just ask if anybody objects?
Thank you, sure.
And they would raise their hand, your worship.
Does anyone object to withdraw of number eight? So seeing none, then that's dropped. Is that correct? Thank you.
Correct.
I don't think we've done one like that before, so I wasn't quite sure procedurally what to do there. So that's where it stands, and I think it's fair to say that we'll have some future conversations around this, and FNA, as has already been well articulated, is a venue for counselors to come and have a conversation around the finance side of things, and I would encourage everybody to do that. Counsel Hall, I see your thinking. You want to?
Well, I guess, as a result of, not to prolong this, because we've been at it now an hour and a half, and there are folks waiting, but as a result of my comments around us brown bagging and having a conversation around that, I don't want to put a motion for it, I'd like to do this as simply as possible, but I would like us to pursue that. I would take that on. I know that you've already challenged Counsel.
Encouraged.
Encouraged, encouraged Counsel Frisell to bring forward that piece, but we need to have this discussion, and it can't prolong. We need to get this out of the way, because as I said earlier, I want to get away with that loud. I'm tired of it.
Yep. We all heard that loud and clear.
No.
I don't think a motion on the fly would be helpful at this point. I think we're all, we're all interested in getting to the same.
Thank you, I just needed, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.